This regular meeting of the Central Berkshire Regional Speaker Committee will come to order. John Amarcos is out with the flu tonight, so I will be presiding. We all rise for the legislative basis. Let's begin. Let's begin. To the light of the United States of America, in this republic which contains one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as far out. Superintendent, please.
Yes, we have a few people we know won't be here. Dr. Craft Rees won't be here. Ms. D. Tomaso?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Gazillo, I do not know if he will make it. Mr. Hagmeyer?
Here.
Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Ms. Keith?
Here.
Mr. Lacattel?
Here.
Mrs. Latizori?
Here.
Mr. Les will not be here. Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker will not be here. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Amarcos is not here. We do still have an open seat in Washington. Mr. Bartels?
Here.
And our CBA rep is not here. And our student rep?
Here.
Isaac, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Is anyone in the audience making either a video or an audio recording, with the exception of Rick White, of course? Thank you. First item on the agenda is responses from the audience. Tonight is the legally required public hearing, so we will first go into the public hearing, which consists of a presentation followed by responses from the audience on the budget. So if you are ready.
We're ready.
Thank you.
We'll get started right away. I believe most people here have missed double time, so we will try and make sure we're at a level that will give enough detail, but we also recognize that fact. It is also available on the website. We can also add the presentation if people want to look closer at that. Just an overview of what we'll go through about midway through, you'll notice that we'll switch and Melissa will take over. I'll do most of the substantive information around positional changes, goals of the budget, that type of information. Melissa will talk more about the specific revenue source and the overall impact to the towns. Again, we've said multiple times that our goals really drive the budget. What are our educational goals? What do we see as necessary to continue to provide the best possible education to all of our learners in Central Berkshire? We've talked a lot, I won't go into the details on this, but we've talked about tiered instruction, really making sure that there's a solid Tier One that all students access. That's your general ed teachers in the classroom. That there's a Tier Two that's robust enough to support students who need some remediation to get back to Tier One full-time. And then that we do have some tailored Tier Three in special ed. We've really worked in this budget to even things out in those areas, so there's educational equity in all grade levels and in all schools, and we feel good about that. I have taught before, and there will be a larger conversation in March about what's called our targeted program review. We were selected by the Department of Ed this year. They had done reviews of all Level Three and Four schools. They moved on to what's called a Level Two school. There's five levels, we know, Level One being the highest. We are a Level Two school system, and they really come in and just give you recommendations at that stage, but they're really quality recommendations. They spent about two weeks with us between interviews and onsite activities as well as offsite activities. And what we're proud of in this budget is the additions and the changes that we have made already line up to their recommendations, so it was validating that the things we see they saw. This budget, some of the things we're really proud of, again, we talked about a Tier One model that has strong instruction for every student. We're adding instructional coach, K-8, that will work directly with teachers to make sure we're providing the strongest education possible in our classroom. We've added two Title One tutors. That speaks to equity. We did not have Title One tutors in every grade at the middle school, we now will. And we did not have Title One tutors in all schools, we now will. The exception is Wacona. Wacona is not a Title One school. They put their interventions into place in other ways pretty successfully. We will have, this is an exciting thing for us, a Chromebook in the hands of every student in grades three through 12. We have classroom technology that meets our needs, K-2, but three through 12, every student will actually have a Chromebook assigned to them next year. We do feel our curriculum, our technology needs have been met at this time, and we have enough flexibility to meet them in real time as needs come up, so we're proud of meeting that goal. Again, some of our curriculums that we're aligning to the new standards are additions in this budget specifically at the middle school. This just shows you where those staffing revisions come in. Again, the Title One tutor at the elementary, that's an addition for us to make sure we have Title One tutors at Beckett Kittredge, Ian Cravenville. We did have some capacity in current staffing at the middle school. The middle school last year, if you'll recall, went from two teams in grade seven and two in grade eight, to one seventh-grade team of teachers, one eighth, and then what they call a split team. The effect of that was we did not have as many sections of kids going through what the middle school calls explorers. Those are their elective programs. And we had some capacity in staff that this time in the budget, we've been able to use to not fill two retirements. So we're still able to give kids the same kinds of services and programming, but we did not need to fill a teacher retirement and explore a librarian retirement. We did add a Title One tutor, like I mentioned before, to make sure we have that opportunity in grade six, seven, and eight. The high school, middle school and high school worked really hard to line up their schedules, and we had a lot of flexibility amongst the administration in being willing to look at it this way, as well as the teaching staff. By lining up the middle and high school schedules, they can share staff, so we're really able to use people very efficiently, have everyone working at capacity, and maintain the same services to kids, if not more, without adding staff, and in some cases with reductions. So we had a reduction of a .4 teacher in the arts program and a .5 through retirement at Wacona, and we were able to still offer the exact same courses by using capacity in Mesecus staff members who had time in their schedules. Again, the two positions here are the coach I mentioned, and sometimes after a budget's adopted, it's very common in special ed for needs to change, and then in the following budget year, you clean that up. We had a para position last year that we had in the budget. Student needs changed as the year progressed. We did not fill that position, so now we're reducing it. So again, not people who are losing employment, but retirements or positions that were not filled. Again, this is really just a change in how we offer services. We had hoped, we still have interest in hiring a BCBA on staff. It's a very hard position to fill. It's called a board certified behavioral analysis. There are far fewer of them than there are positions, and we don't have any leg time. When we can't fill it, we have to immediately provide it through the law, so we contract for it. Just a change in how we budget to make it more transparent. We had a paraprofessional position, again, that was not needed last year, and we're now taking it out of the budget, as well as a high school teaching position. We are using a program in Pittsfield for transition services for our 18 to 22-year-old students with special education needs. As a result of that, our needs at Wacona went down. So you will see on this slide, this slide just shows you where there's changes to FTEs, full-time equivalencies of staff members, people who actually work here. And the only one that really stands out, these are just kind of cleaning up movement of where, like I mentioned, some middle school staff are working at the high school part-time, that kind of thing. But this right here is where you see the big one. It's a decrease in student services. It's not necessarily that student needs have changed, it's how they're getting those needs met have changed. So if they're having their needs met outside of the district, for example, in the partnership program we run with Pittsfield, or through a contracted BCBA as opposed to a staff member, you'll see this number go down, as well as the amount of money we're spending on salaries in that line go down. But you may see, and you will see, an increase that Melissa will talk to, for example, here, in tuition for students out of district and for behavioral services in the contracted RUM. So it's just somewhat of a shift of where resources are being spent to support kids based on what their actual needs are.
So I will go through increases to the budget, decreases to the budget, revenue sources, expenditures, as a whole, and then go through the assessments, the transportation, operating, and capital assessments. So there are increases to this budget, and every year we have contractual increases for all of our bargaining units. People move columns and steps, and we plan for that every year. So each year you'll see that in our budget. OPEB trust appropriation, last year we opened in fiscal year 18, we began an OPEB trust fund. We are adding an additional $250,000 to that funding of $150,000 from last year for a total of $400,000 in FY '19. That's an increase to the budget. Transportation, we signed a new contract last year, two and a half percent increase year over year. That goes for regular day transportation as well as special ed transportation, and those are the amounts of the increases. Student services, as the superintendent had said, it's a shift from where the salaries were. We've reduced salaries because of where the needs now are, where we're anticipating them to move, and that's in out-of-district tuition and behavioral services for the behavioral analysis. Charter school, this is from the state. We get an assessment every year from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that tells us what we have to pay for charter school. Those are the children that are attending charter schools that are in our district. And that's an increase year over year of $17,946. There are decreases to the budget as well. We signed a new solar contract that we hope to, we anticipate receiving benefits from this year starting fairly soon. It should be operational in March. And we also signed a natural gas contract for heat in some of our buildings. That will give us a decrease in some of our utilities, those two contracts. Unemployment, we don't have the reduction in force that we've had in past years, so this is a reduction in the unemployment account line because of the anticipated need. We're just not seeing the claims that we were seeing. Technology, there's also a decrease in this line item or this program grouping, and that's almost $18,000. And we're able to offset needs with the use of grant funds during the course of the year as they arise, and we, as Lori had said, we are now, with this budget in '19, we will have Chromebooks in the hands of every third through 12th grader. Berkshire County Retirement is an appropriation request that we receive. It's basically an invoice that we received from Berkshire County Retirement that says you must pay this amount this year. This year it went down by almost $30,000, so that helps. So year over year, last year's fiscal year 2018 budget, $27,960,000. This year, $27,408,000, an increase of $312,000, or 1.15%. Our budget is level, meaning revenues match expenditures, so in this column here, you can see this is what we're anticipating for revenues this year. This is last year's anticipated revenues, the adopted budget revenues. So you can see that we're getting a little bit more, we're anticipating more in chapter 78, a little bit more in chapter 71. That's transportation reimbursement aid. We submit an end-of-year report with our expenses. The state reimburses us for some of our transportation costs. Charter school reimbursement went up a little bit. We are also adding, let me backtrack here and go up to this one. Last year, we set aside funding of $221,000 to be used in this year's budget to offset transportation costs and transportation assessments. This year, we are using $450,000 of that funding that we set aside last year to offset transportation costs and assessments. The bottom half of this screen is really local income. Interest income is on the money that we hold in bank accounts, and that fluctuates. Medicaid reimbursement is held level. We anticipate receiving about the same year over year, and this is for reimbursement for services that we provide. Miscellaneous income is typically, can range from anywhere from $2,001 given year to, could go up to $10,000 depending on what you get in. And really what this is, it could be a vendor who sends us a reimbursement check. That would go into miscellaneous income. So it's hard to gauge what you'll see every year. $5,000 is a good amount. The budget guidelines this year state that if E and D, we have certified E and D of 1.361 million. The budget guidelines state that if E and D is over a million, appropriate all but $250,000 to the budget. So that's what we're doing here with the 1.11 million. The last piece of the puzzle is the town assessments. That's at $15,902,000, an increase of just under $70,000 year over year as a whole. So fiscal year 18, town assessments were at $15,902,000. This year, they're at $15,902,000. So expenditures, this is a grouping that is broken out by function code, which is the way we report our expenditures to the state. So you have all of the different areas, school committee, superintendent, business, finance, technology, and so on, and the instructional areas, and this shows you year over year what level each program was at in fiscal year 18 and where they are in fiscal year 19. And there's pluses and minuses throughout this whole, all of the programs. And this continues on with the changes in year-over-year line items. One thing I do want to mention on this screen, Berkshire Health Group, the board on January 29th voted not to increase premiums, health insurance premiums. The claims that have come in are lower than the premiums we received. The board has a very healthy fund balance, so the vote was not to increase premiums, no need to this year because we are all in good shape with that. So you see where that amount is just a little bit under last year's amount. That is due to changes in employees moving to retirees, employees on regular plans or retirees on regular plans moving to Medex plans, which are a bit cheaper. So you see a decrease there, but it was a 0% premium increase. And then the last item is the OPEB trust fund, which in this budget is at $400,000, an increase of $250,000 over last year. So this chart kind of groups it together by, well, it does group it together by area. So we are a school district. The majority of our costs are employees instructional for the students and benefits. And this is, this line here is the benefit and health insurances, and this is all the instructional expenses. This breaks it out into three different categories so that you have, you can think of the budget as three basic areas, operational, benefits, and salaries. So you can see our salaries are about half of the budget, 49%. Our benefits are about 26%. So between salaries and benefits, 75% are, they're 75% of our budget. The remaining of 25% is all operational. Aside from the $27 million operating budget, we also have other revenue sources. These sources are grants, federal, state, private. There are also reimbursement accounts, local accounts like athletics, food service, and those accounts all total, and almost $2 million more. So 1.994 is what we're anticipating the revenue to be in fiscal year 19 for the other sources of revenue outside of operating. This slide shows the town assessments, broken out by town, percentage of enrollment, five-year rolling average percentage. Last year's net town assessment, this year's net minimum contribution, that's the amount that the state says. A town must minimally pay to educate their children, it's set by the state. The transportation assessment for this year, the operating budget balance, and then the total net town assessment. $15,902 are the total town assessments, which is an increase of just under $70,000, 0.44%. And within each of these, you can see some towns are going up, some towns are going down. That's a factor of enrollment. Net minimum contribution amounts set by the state are either higher or lower. These are the capital assessments. These have all been voted on previously, so we are seeing a decrease in year-over-year capital expenditures as we have in the past. So this year, we're seeing $56,252 decrease with the existing capital projects. The budget and the presentation are online, so at that link, if you want to look at it, you can print, or we have copies here as well that you can take.
Are there any comments or questions from the audience? This is a public hearing. This is your opportunity. In that case, thank you very much. We will continue. Next item would be student affairs. Mr. McCain.
So today has been, this week has been a really busy week, but today especially has been busy because in addition to having the Valentine's Day ceremonies where the chorus goes around and sings songs, kind of ordered by the students, today is Childhood Cancer Awareness Day, and that's particularly important for Wacona because we have a student who would be attending Wacona but hasn't been able to because he's had leukemia. But we've had several events going on where one of them is he's got T-shirts for sale as a fundraiser, and there's been ribbons for sale to wear today and other days as well. There have been similar fundraiser things at Mesecus, which I believe he had attended, but it's great to see that Wacona was able to get right into it. Even people in my class who hadn't attended school with him were really supportive of this event and really got into it. There's a lot of people wearing yellow and gold and orange, which are the colors to present support for that. And I saw a lot of the T-shirts out there, which means there's a lot of money raised for that as well. So it's really great to see all that.
Very good, thank you. Any questions of Sec? Okay, so the next item is the secretary's report. You look on page 99 of our packet. One correction that I noticed. Page 99D under coming, where it says Comington Lake, it says, "Member Lacattel noted." Well, that was member Gazillo, I think. Quite true. Are there any other questions or corrections to this? And would a member make the motion to accept these minutes?
Would we accept the minutes in second?
Motion's made in second to the accept the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. And that motion is carried. Next item is the financial report. Would a member make a read of warrant, please?
We resolve that warrant number 2018 dish 31 dated February 15th, 2018, in the amount of $683,001.35.
Motion's made in second to approve the warrant for operating expenses. Are there any questions or comments? In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. That motion is carried. And the communications report of the chair, and I think the first item is the Washington representative, and there is none at this point in time. The second is the district management group grant. Do we want to say anything on that?
I can give an update. We had sent out some information on it. We got more information back after looking at it. Mr. Amarcos, Mr. Lacattel had consulted, and it really is repetitive of a lot of the work that's already happened at Berkshire County Education Task Force. We had one member who was able to commit to a couple of the dates, but other than that, we didn't get a lot of interest. So at this point, we've requested of them to keep us abreast of what's going on, but that we're not going to directly participate in the full two days on March 1st and I believe it was the 2nd. It was a Thursday, Friday. So I will certainly keep you updated. My colleagues in Adams Cheshire and in North Adams are primarily driving this, and they have some specific goals, but it didn't seem at this time to be a need for us.
Any questions? The one that I would add is I appreciate the members who attended the seven-town advisory meeting Tuesday night. It was a little boring, but that's because we have a good budget and it's not very controversial. I'm sorry that you missed the controversy, but anyway, I appreciate you spending the time on that. Next item is curriculum subcommittee. Is anybody, can anybody report on that?
We haven't met since the last meeting. I believe we have a meeting scheduled for March 8th.
Okay, March 8th. Finance.
We have not met over the last week since the last school committee meeting. The next scheduled meeting is the 27th of this month at 6:00 PM at Sepulvede.
All right.
Do we have an update on the regional agreement feedback from Desi at this point?
We haven't, Desi still has the updates, and they haven't gotten back to us in some time, but I anticipate that prior to the next meeting of the finance subcommittee. The next item is the Comington proposal. Why don't you read that motion and we'll...
We resolve that Central Berkshire Regional School may approve the Comington proposal included in the letter from the Comington Board of Selectmen in January 25th, 28th, 22nd.
Okay, the motion's made in second. I skipped over comments from the audience at this point. Josh, if you or somebody else wants to make a comment on the motion, you can do that at this time. If not, we will continue.
I don't have any comments, other than the letter that sent this one.
All right. I would just kick it off by saying that we met, I met with a member from the Comington Select Board in November and this, or December, I can't recall which, and we offered to negotiate and close the gap between the OPEB numbers, Comington number and the district's number. At that point, we kind of agreed to disagree, and it was the subcommittee's conclusion that it was dead for some period of time, we don't know how long. And then the letter that we got was kind of a surprise to us, and it looks to me, and to the subcommittee, as if we are going to negotiate, but it's going to be negotiation So that's where we are right now. All we have in front of us is the letter from Comington, and I'll make some comments This is the letter that the full school committee has seen, and there are really two parts. One concern... One concerns items covered by the transition agreement and the OPEB issue. The letter said that there was a transmission agreement attached and there was none, so I'm assuming that the transition agreement that's discussed in the letter is probably the one that we had about two years ago in March. So what I did was I parsed the letter and have a few concerns about that. In proposal number two, it says upon withdrawal, Cummingston will pay regular and special education tuition for Cummingston students who are currently enrolled and choose to remain in the district at a rate established by the current version of the transition agreement. Again, not sure what the current version is right now, but that conflicts, or that's not necessary. There is an item in the current transition agreement that speaks to this, and there's It's confusing. I don't know whether there's a change here or whether there isn't a change. Number three, outstanding capital debt shall be paid on an outgoing basis at the calculated rate for Cummingston in the final year in that district, FY twenty-nineteen. And they speak about an ongoing basis, and again, ongoing, I'm not sure what that means. There is an item in the transition agreement that is pretty clear, I think, but it's not quite clear in the letter. So I'm concerned about that. Number four was, again, the use of ongoing, and that's covered in the March twenty-sixteen transition agreement, so I'm not sure what the difference is there. And we get to number five, which is the OPEB amount, and as we know, Cummingston, at this point in the letter, said the five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, and the number that we've been talking about, the district has been talking about for a while, is one point seven seven million dollars. I can speak to where the district's number came from. As people that attended the finance subcommittee know, we employed Odyssey, and Odyssey did a great job of estimating what the district's liability was. And when anybody makes an estimate, whether it's Odyssey or Seagull, who did the first estimate, or another company that Cummingston employed, it all depends on the assumptions you made. And Odyssey was very clear on the assumptions they made. You have to make assumptions on mortality table, and that changed a little bit. He described what it was. It's the same one that's employed by the PERAC, which is the public group for the state. He had to assume something for increases in medical insurance, and finally, the infla, or, I'm sorry, the investment return. And he assumed six percent, and he described where that came from. That's also the amount that's used by PERAC, and I have a handout that I'll hand out to you later that shows that other people are using that same amount. And he is struck, he used the gas redirection to a greater extent than the other two had done. So that's where ours came from. I can't speak to where Cummingston's came from, but we're off by a million dollars. I think there's room for negotiation. I'd like to negotiate that, but I don't, I don't know how amenable the town is to looking at a different number. So those are my thoughts on it. Does anybody on the committee have a thought on this?
I talked to one of the select members, and he started to run me through the formula that they had used to derive this number of five eighty-five. The biggest part seems to be this discount rate because they're providing cash upfront against a many-year payment and the assumption that as this is deposited, it will grow. And between this amount that they're talking about, the five eighty-five, and as I remember, there's something about E and V and some other special ed, there's, I think, three other parts that they feel that they're entitled to get back from the district, but they're saying, no, we're not going to take it, and it would round the number up to seven hundred thousand dollars. The mindset, but, and that's, the biggest part is this formula, this discount part of the formula, and that's...
Is it, yeah, so, is this the one point seven million we, isn't that already discounted by, you know, paying upfront, that's to pay upfront to eliminate liability?
That's right. The regional number for the district is about fifty million, and if you apply the discount that I spoke to, the six percent, that's how you get to thirty-eight million, which is applying that discount. The next effort is to determine Cummingston's share of that, and that's, we took what the average contribution of Cummingston for the last twenty-five years, and because, you know, we have retirees that have been retiring for the last twenty-five years and will continue to be, use our medical insurance for the next, until they're ninety years old.
So my question is, if that was the case, then they're taking a discount on the discount?
Well, I'm not, we, I think that's what Rick described just now. I'm not sure that that's the case, and I really think we need to see what they've done.
The other question I have is the letter, I mean, this letter and including the email of this morning. I mean, if we vote on this, and let's say we vote yes on this, is this some binding number, we like commit to that number, or, I mean, is that the real number that we know? We have to go to our town and say, here's what we're going to get from Cummingston? It should have been this, but is it what we agreed to?
That's what I think happens.
And if that's the case, I mean, is that Cummingston's official, I mean, is there, I mean, I don't know, the town, I mean, I would think the town needs to come to us with an official, something validated by the Cummingston Select Board, should it, should it be an official Cummingston Select Board, that seven hundred thousand? I was in an email from Josh, so I don't know whether that's a binding number or whatever, you know?
That's my concern as well. This is not very, there's just a lot of holes or uncertainties in the letter. The letter doesn't match with the transition agreement as we had. The transition agreement that we had is this document that was negotiated by the seven towns with the assistance of our attorney, and it was modeled after an existing transition agreement that was used by another. And what this letter asks us to do is amend this in some fashion, and as I said, there are a lot of uncertainties, a lot of uncertainties between these two documents. So, you know, my intent is not to support this for that reason, that there are a lot of uncertainties, as well as the fact that we're off by over a million dollars, and we don't know exactly what Cummingston's rationale is. That hasn't been laid out for us very clearly, if at all. Mr. Hopper?
Yeah, I mean, Rick has talked to somebody on the select board from Cummingston, and now we're hearing three different things, and I'm wondering why we don't have somebody come and give us a presentation? We've heard absolutely nothing, other than these two letters, the one today and the one we got from Russ Sears, the last meeting. You know, why isn't there somebody, you know, giving us a presentation? These are the answers to these questions, you know? We don't, we haven't heard from Cummingston, and I don't know how well. So I'll be voting no.
Well, I think in fairness to Cummingston, they did come, I mean, Josh, I forget her name, I'm sorry, but Jill, sorry, they came and they presented, but what they presented, we didn't agree to. They come up with the five hundred eighty-five because they were using capital expenditures in their equation.
Right, but now we're at this meeting here, and we're going to vote on it. Given the opportunity, nobody has spoken.
Yeah.
You know, so that's my point.
Agreed.
You want, if this is what you want, you know, I think you should fight for it, so I'm not seeing that, so...
Yeah, I, you know, I think this committee has supported withdrawal in the past, but I think we, you know, what I would normally expect, there'd be some negotiation or some conversation, so we reach a common number that, you know, was a compromise, and we could rationalize each party's approach, but we aren't at that point, and we tried to achieve that, but we're unsuccessful in doing that. And if we vote no, I don't know whether Cummingston wants to continue to just send letters back and forth, or they want to sit down and go through the two schemes in an attempt to rationalize them, and some way of achieving a common, something in between or something we can both accept. Certainly, we try and achieve that, and I think we probably could, but we're unsuccessful in making that happen so far.
Thank you, and we have to get to a point where we can, I mean, if it's that far off, how do we face our, get our towns to vote? I mean, we all like Cummingston to go, but the towns also have to agree with, and how can we go to our towns and say, yeah, go ahead and give up a million bucks for Cummingston to let them walk, you know? I mean, people are going to ask that, you know, and, I mean, I can't, I couldn't stand there and say, yeah, sure.
Sure they will, even if we all voted to agree to this lump sum number, if the towns vote no, what we say isn't, doesn't matter.
This at least lets the process go forward.
I believe this would, we'd also need to go back to the voters in Cummingston to vote on as well, whatever the final, final agreement would be. Again, I, like, I agree with Dick and the rest of the finance subcommittee, I mean, I think we're still willing to have conversation. There needs to be some structure and some formula to the map. I appreciate the work that Josh did, and I appreciate his email from this morning. I just, it's hard to take this forward and have some understanding about what we are actually voting on today. And, yeah, in all honesty, I'm sure that the towns would, you know, it's undeniable that Cummingston has voted to go out, and the school committee has voted to let them out. The question is, will an agreement pass that is going to pass muster here and with the rest of the towns? I think that's where we're sort of stuck, is having that transition agreement concrete.
I apologize, I don't know the formula for being, but I know that I was told the formula, and it was a percentage that reduced it by a lot. And I think this was figured, the letter said it was fifty million, and then I think Josh's letter said fifty-one million, and I think a couple of questions could be answered. What is the number? Is the number fifty million or forty million? What's the starting point? And from there, you work back, and what are the percentages? Is it six, Dick is talking six percent, Greg Miller, seven, and then seven, I think Cummingston is seven and a half percent. I don't think they're out to pull a fast one. I really don't. I think they really want out. They want to close the door, and they're a small community, five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars is a lot of money.
I understand that.
It's not a small bunch.
We have several different formulas going around.
Yeah.
And it's hard to comprehend what exactly we're looking at just by having it written out on paper, and the email from Josh this morning was very well-written and understandable, but it's almost like we need to sit there and whiteboard out each equation to see what pieces you're taking and where your equation leads, so that we can see, are we using the same assumptions? Is this number actually factually incorrect, and what the total, what the amount's come out to? If we can't do that, we're just sort of assuming that the way that everything's been factored out is correct.
They are a small community, and I understand it's a large amount. I really appreciate that. But you're saying, I mean, I don't want to be too emotional in this, but you're saying, I'm not going to pay the insurance for, say, ten to twenty of our retirees. So what do I do? Do I go through our over three hundred retirees and pick ten or whatever the number is and say, we're not getting the money for this, so you're off the rolls?
No.
You can't do that.
I understand that, and I'm not asserting that. I'm asserting that those people that keep these actuarial tables, like any insurance company or somebody, has thinking there's so many sick people and so many non-sick people, and this is the rate we're going to charge. When it comes to this OPEB, they have a certain formula that they use, and if you put cash upfront, that cash earns money. It gets interest on, and it'll grow, and that will help solidify the numbers.
The numbers we are using, the one point seven million, is a pre-funded number, and I meant to pass this out. This is not particular to this issue, but we are going to be discussing this next, the next finance subcommittee. We're going to be talking about this again because we have the auditor coming in, and eventually, we have pars coming in. So I wanted you to see some numbers and to see some of these definitions. The point is, we are using a pre-funded number.
Dick, real quick, of our fifty-seven million OPEB liability, we have how much of that funded currently?
One hundred fifty thousand.
Right, okay. So I'd like to say that I think if we could accept their amount to go into our trust, that's a positive for us to take to the council, let them make that decision. The fact that they want to amend transition agreement in ways that we're not sure, and you're the one who actually worked on it, that's what kind of scares me a little bit. But the money, I think, puts us in a position ahead of where we currently are, which I think is good.
The five hundred eighty-five or the seven hundred, whatever the number is.
Right, whatever it is, it's better than what we have.
It's better than nothing.
Absolutely.
Sure, but it's still a million shy of what the application...
But we only have one hundred fifty thousand anyways.
Yeah.
That doesn't really change the other towns' burdens, I mean?
No, but we've only asked them for one hundred fifty thousand last year. Of all the towns, in four hundred this year.
Well, the other towns are, until they're, they're, the rest of the town, we are on a pay-as-you-go scheme.
Right.
Once you leave the district, you're no longer on a pay-as-you-go. It's a different regime. Anything else?
The only question I had, all it helps, was where the select board individual intimated that there were funds that we're holding... that there were funds that we're holding, they put in, that they have the right to extract, that would basically bring the total up to $700,000, not the 595. The 585 is raw cash from their banks of ours, which is, I don't know.
I think Josh was clear on that. His letter is well-written.
Well, that's in the transition agreement.
Okay, but the money is there, the number I...
It's in the exhibit to the transition agreement, but that was written, I mean, it has to be updated.
But what I'm trying to say is, if we're talking 585 as cash, and eliminating in the conversation the additional funds that bring it up to 700, we should be talking 700, not 585.
I just, I didn't read the, the first I seen 700 was in this email.
Sure.
Which was sometime today.
Yeah, I haven't seen the email, so...
So, I don't know, I don't know those other things, but they're kind of a different animal. They have never been an issue between us. The comparable numbers are in the transition agreement, and they have to be updated, because it's two years old. But there's never been any controversy about any of the other stuff.
Well, I'm just trying to be a spokesman, since I didn't read with him. This is what he said to me, and I could see where the number came up to 700.
But they should be meeting with us. They met with you, and you're coming and telling us. They should be meeting with us.
Yeah, I don't, I initiated, simply because of the last...
And you have to be careful also, who speaks for Covington? This letter doesn't reflect, we met with Jill and Josh and Kip at least twice in the last, in the Subcommittee, and the letter doesn't match what they told us.
Oh, okay.
So there's been a shift there.
Sure.
It's just, you know, I'm not, I guess you'd go with the latest, and I, you know, we really don't know.
Okay, so if we turn this down, why do we do that? Do we write back and say, "Please be more specific"? Or will we set up a date and renegotiate? Because the big stumbling point is this 585 versus 1 million seven, right?
Right.
And obviously, whatever the transition, the original transition versus what's implied in here, ironing those two things out, and if they're square, you've got a deal.
Right. Ready to vote?
Yes.
In that case, we will have a roll call, and all those in favor of the adopting or accepting the letter proposal, say aye, and those against it, say no.
Ms. DiTomaso?
No.
Mr. Farley?
No.
Mr. Gazillo?
No.
Mr. Hagmeyer?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Lacatelle?
No.
Ms. Ledizori?
No.
Mr. Peters?
No.
Mr. Wagner?
No.
All right, the motion fails. And I think what they're asking us to do is send a letter, and we'll have the Chair write a letter that says it failed in offering to negotiate, I think, or offering to resolve some of these differences. Next item on the agenda is policy.
We have not met. We will be meeting February 28 at 5:30 here at MSBA.
All right, thank you. Personnel, we have not met, and there is no reason to go into executive session tonight. And is there a report on technology? Next would be the Wakona Building Project, is there a report there?
Sure. So, just last, we did just meet last week, but there were a couple of things that have happened since, so just to update you quickly. There was a working group meeting today. Working Group is really the meeting where a smaller group gets together and really does engage in producing work that will be required for MSBA. As I mentioned before, DRA and SCANSCA are working together to set the agendas, and they are primarily taking on facilitation of the meetings as well at this point. They're very productive, very efficient right now. The big work of the working group is the educational plan. We have had a variety of people contributing, because you have to basically document everything you currently do as a building. What's your technology infrastructure, what's your teaching methodology, how many lunches do you run, everything you could possibly think of. And we are probably close to 95% done with that portion of it, which we feel really good about, largely attributed to the work that Aaron Robb and Sean Therrien have been doing. Tomorrow will be the second visioning session, and after that, we'll get a full report on the visioning sessions. We'll also have the community meetings in March to get the input there. And then the second part of the ed plan will be completed, which is really, what do you want to do? All to be submitted to the MSBA for approval in May. I anticipate bringing it before the School Building Committee in this group sometime in April. So you will see that. We also talked about the space summary. DRA would like to challenge some of the spacing allocations we've been given with the MSBA, and they've talked about how they're going to go about that. There were interviews today at Wakona with a variety of stakeholders, the administration, teachers, administration from the Student Services Office, talking about how the building's currently used. And there will also be an existing condition in terms of the facilities condition. There'll be a walkthrough next week, I believe, on Tuesday, with some of the engineers who work with DRA, to look at the facilities a little bit closer. So, a lot's happening. We then went into the Full School Building Committee group, and we had a meeting. Again, we went over a lot of the same stuff, but the one thing I will just finish with is, I think it's helpful, and I've said it a couple of times, is to have a timeframe in your mind. Where are we? Where are we going? Right now, we're in what's called the Preliminary Design Program. That's the spring of '18. That's when we will submit our educational plan, what do we do, and what might we want to look at. It's when we'll start to submit things like our space summary, things of that nature. In the fall, we'll go into our Preferred Schematic Report. That's when we really start to narrow things down and identify what we prefer, and start to vet that, and put money to it. And then in the winter, we go into schematic design, which further develops that. In the spring of '19 is the vote, from where we will go in front of MSBA to have our plans approved, and to get a vote from the seven towns to see if the project's supported. One last note is, DRA has really kind of shifted our thinking. I think today was a big shift. The community events, the outreach at this point, is not about generating support for a project, it's about figuring out what that project will be. And they emphasize that several times. They want to hear all voices, they want to hear all concerns. We're not proposing anything right now, we're determining what we will. So you'll feel a different vibe at the community workshops in March than you felt before, because it's really about letting people have their opportunity to get some input. And then in the fall, we'll be going back to say, "Here's what we're looking to propose, and we're looking for support." If that makes sense, just a shift in where we're at. But all things are going quite well. And again, the next visioning session is tomorrow from 9 to 4. If you can't join us, it will be videoed and on the website. That's all.
The Building Committee has a lot going on.
Yeah.
And I attended their meeting at 4:30. You know, it was very instructive, very, very well-done, and I have a great deal of confidence in DRA and...
You know, I agree with all that. For the visioning sessions, you know, we've been doing these visioning sessions, and they've been, DRA has assigned, has assigned homework for us to do, right? So, they've given us a lot of videos and literature to read, and in preparing for those visioning sessions. And those videos, those links are, maybe we should send those links out to, you know, the towns, somehow get that, or, you know, put it in the newsletter to have, you know, the community see those links, because, you know, they're very compelling, you know, about the education system, where it is now, and the history of the education system, and where it's going. It's really eye-opening, and we have an opportunity with, you know, even if we rebuild, doesn't matter what we do with the school, rebuild, renovate, whatever, we have an opportunity to really transform the way we educate kids in our community. And it needs to be done. And I think, you know, when we go to pitch to the communities about the project, it would be good if they had some of this information in their back pocket to understand where it is we're coming from, and why we're going here. And I think if we could send that out to the towns in some way, shape, or form, or at least get it into the newsletter, you know, I think that would be a really good thing.
We can certainly do that. We'll do that for the March 1st newsletter. So, and again, these are helpful. We wouldn't have the videos at the visioning session if we hadn't had the suggestion from Bonnie. And we will certainly include all the information with the invites on the community night. So, thank you, Mr. Peters. We'll definitely do that.
Any other questions or comments on the Building Committee? Thank you. Superintendent's report.
All right, well, I'm going to, speaking of people who have a lot going on, we have a group of them here tonight, but specifically three who are going to talk with you. I'm not going to get into much of my report, because I think they're the bulk of it. Zach did a wonderful job about talking about a community event we had today, but I do have permission from the family to share their name and just a little bit about their story. But what I really want to do is just thank Kristen Forward, who is the mom of a ninth grader in our district, Cam Forward, who, as Zach mentioned, is fighting cancer right now. She brought forward to us information about International Childhood Cancer Day, Awareness Day, and some really striking statistics about how limited the funding is for all childhood cancers, and particularly the one that Cam is addressing, dealing with right now. So, thank you to her, because she really reached out and got this started, but certainly thank you to our kids and all of our staff and administration, who jumped right on board, and were all about really coming together to make him feel supported. So, that I did, you know, certainly have her permission to share, and we're going to be sharing a lot of pictures and things like that with him and his family. So, the vice principals are actually here tonight, and you hear from our principals quite a bit, and many of our administration is here to support the vice principals, but I think we're somewhat unique in Central Berkshire, that our vice principals, which hopefully is not overly unique, but I think they have a huge role that is often not fully seen or appreciated. I think vice principals, we think discipline, those kinds of things, but they are often the people who have some of the strongest relationships with kids, with families, with our teachers in the classroom, and that is very true of the three that we are lucky to have. And they add a ton to our administrative team. It's somewhat timely, knowing of the events that went on yesterday in Florida. And certainly, there are very big differences around what we're going to talk about, and some of the concerns that come together with concerns with things like gun laws and mental health issues. But we are always talking about ways to make sure we know our kids, we know our staff, and we know our families, because they're all interacting in our buildings on a regular basis. And what Steve Messino, who's our high school principal, Julian Dowlin, who's our middle school principal, and Annie Pecor, who's our elementary vice principal at Craneville, but also has a lot of knowledge as to what's going on, and the other three, because we have a great team, are going to talk about how we support kids, how we connect to them, things that we're offering. The impetus around this, I just want to say, is the social-emotional learning data that was collected at the end of MCAS last year for the first time in grades five, eighth, and 10. And we got statewide data on things like math, ELA, and science. We also got it on school culture, and how students perceive their experience in school. Do they connect to adults? Do they feel safe? Do they have a friend they can rely on? One caveat you do need to recognize about the data is, at Craneville, we did not receive data back. It was the first year the state had done the data, we did not receive that data. That happened in some cases. We do have Kittredge and Beckett data, but it's only fifth grade, so your Kittredge data is 20 students, your Beckett data is 16 students. We really want to see our fifth grade data. That's a lot more meaningful when you're looking for patterns. But our three elementary principals and vice principals still got some themes out of it that they all agreed on and that they were able to use. The other thing, at our eighth grade and our 10th grade, we have some really good, useful data, because we have a large portion, it was, you know, close to 150 10th graders who took it. But what Aaron Robb discovered, which is important to note, only 65% of high schools chose to participate. You didn't have to. So you always question who's choosing to participate in something like that, that kind of thing. So, but again, we weren't surprised by our data, so we did use it. So, they still haven't come, they still think I'm wrong. Did you think you'd be joining me? If it was the principal, they would be like, "I'm going to put them on the spot." So, you're going to do like flipping too, right? So they're going to take over now, but, "Oh, you guys coming?" Let's see here. There we go. With our kids. So, and I told them I'd do this, so I told you, it's the survey that prompted it. The three of them worked really well together, two in our great team, got together and talked about some of this. And really, we talked to you about UDL, we talked a lot about it. We've talked about PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. Mr. Velkowsky's here, who actually gave us a little kind of mini seminar on it. And this is social-emotional learning. All three together intersect all the time, but they're all required to be an inclusive community. And that, when we started saying, "How do we measure whether or not we're being effective with social-emotional?", they started rattling things off that they all do, that they all consistently do. And what was nice is, they also talked about what they're doing and how they're seeing it correlate to improvements for kids. And some of them are things that even at the central office level, I see. Our graduation rate is up, meaning our dropout rate is down. I see far less letters coming that are documentation of out-of-school suspensions, things like that, and that's what they're seeing. So, yeah.
I will just, I do want to just mention a couple of things that the three of us talked about today, when we met with Lori, that I think are really directly related to strong social-emotional learning curriculum. I think that the three of us are very dedicated to making sure that we are making strong relationships with our students and with our families, and I think that that is an extremely important part of making students feel like they're a part of our community. We all also spoke about meeting as a core team within our buildings, with our principals, with our school adjustment counselors, with other teachers in the building, to make sure that if students are struggling, we're all aware. And I know we do those meetings weekly, and I think you spoke to those are happening as well. So, instead of letting concerns go, we know weekly, we have dedicated time to making sure that we're addressing concerns, that we're reaching out to parents proactively with concerns. And I have found personally, in comparison to last year and this year, I'm really seeing that make a big impact, with students feeling comfortable to share concerns, with parents reaching out to us. I think I'm a little cautious. So, we also have put some things into place in the three elementary schools I can speak to. One of the themes that came up when we sat down to talk about the data was giving students a voice within our buildings, to make sure that they feel like they're listened to, to make sure that they feel comfortable making rules. And then I think as an outcome of that, when a problem arises, or they see something that would feel so good, they feel much more comfortable being able to express that to the adults who are, you know, in charge. So, I can speak to an example of that in Craneville. We have a couple of teachers, Pat Shepley actually spearheads our fifth grade student council. So, they meet weekly or bi-weekly, depending on what's going on. They have done a food drive around Thanksgiving time, so there's community action like that. But also, within our building, they problem-solve issues that, you know, impact students that we aren't necessarily on our radar. For example, you know, where they get to sit in the cafeteria, or lining up for recess, and making sure that, I like that it says, "Importance of Listening to Student Voice", and validating and sharing why or not it was followed. So they came up with a way to make going out to recess work better for them, and it was actually a really great idea. They decided how they would line up, staff would meet them on the playground, so they get out faster, and it worked. They also had an idea about coming in through the classroom doors, and then when they realized all their muddy feet were going to be where their meeting area was, that didn't work out so well. So they realized that sometimes having a voice works, sometimes they need to go back to the drawing table and sort of figure out how to change their thoughts. So also, we have kids respecting kids, I think is something in... I think it's something in all three elementary schools and secondary level, always working to make sure that we're giving students opportunities to work together. We have a fifth grade, Amy Packard, is a fifth grade teacher at Craneville. We co-run a fifth grade mentoring program where we trained, I think we're up to about 25 kiddos now in the fifth grade, maybe 28, who work with kindergarten and first grade students. And we actually have added in second grade now. Some things that they might do is go in and help their mentee get ready in the morning, get them settled on their morning work. Some of them go out on the playground and get to, you know, help them navigate some social situations. Some of them actually work on academics in the classroom. And what I think is great is that our mentor program is diverse. We have students from, who weren't necessarily friends before the program, who we've seen come together in our monthly mentor lunches, who have grown. We have kids, you know, helping on the bus. So, it's something that, you know, Amy and I are really proud of because it sort of has taken on a life of its own. I do believe all the elementary schools have reading buddies, where, you know, a first grade group might pair with a fourth grade group and they get to know each other through that way. Buddy classrooms is actually a really, something that I have found, as someone who gets the discipline referrals, it's sometimes a first step before going to the office. They can, you know, a second grader might hop over to their buddy classroom next door and get a little work done if they just need a change of environment. And then being able to go back into their classroom instead of, you know, being sent to the office because they need a movement break or something has happened and they need time to process it. They have a safe space to go to and they're not just sent to the office. So, that's great. Kittredge has something that's very exciting. And there's actually a video, it's about 25 seconds, absolutely worth it. The Justice League, which is a group of fifth graders. And I think that the video does speak for itself.
Can you turn the volume up? Is your volume on?
It's on mute. There you go.
Right. And you really, obviously, these kids are role models for, you know, kindness, for showing what, you know, our expectations are within our buildings. I love the name. Also, the Secret Kindness Detectives is something else that's happening at Kittredge, where they are, students are going around and like looking for acts of kindness. And then they are gonna find a way to celebrate those acts of kindness, which sounds pretty exciting. And all three elementary schools have core value works. And each one of those is a link that you could go into. But I can say, I think that the expectations are very similar, you know, across the board, really having a mixture between the concept of how we're treating people, but also the academic piece. 'Cause I think at the heart of all of this is giving students the tools and the expectations that they need to be good members of our community, which also really brings them forward to be able to give high academic achievement because they can focus and they have a safe place to be. So, also, just to show you some, this is a student council bulletin board where the fifth graders are, isn't the beginning stage, finding leaders throughout the building. So, there's some teacher names, the kids grew up there. There's some kindergartners. This is also one of the elementary schools, this Beckett, Washington, or Kittredge?
Kittredge.
Kittredge. And we had a, our student council ran our community gathering one month because it was about leadership. So, they took the mic and really took off. Some pictures of our kids working together. Another, a Bravo board with the concept of putting the post-its up and really celebrating the good. And that's, that's.
I'll share out the presentation, 'cause there's some links in there. One link is to Beckett, Washington's data. The other's to Kittredge, if you wanna actually see what that data report looks like. And I'll pull it up before we're done, and when Steve gets to Lacon, I'll pull the last one up, just so you see the format. And then like Annie said, she's got the links in there to the different ones at Kittredge, Beckett, and Craneville. One other thing, just 'cause it caught my attention when you were talking, is also just the collaboration, I think, between the principals and the vice principal have been felt by the teachers. So, you're seeing a lot of that. And now, we've had it between the kids. So, you know we have our Battle of Books competition when they get together. But Kathy and Mary Kay recently worked together to actually have the Justice League, who is a Kittredge group, travel out and present to the Beckett students about the Justice League and who they are, and see if that could work at Beckett. So, it really, it started, you know, originally, multiple years ago, at the time with Kathy, Leslie, and Debbie. And now, Mary Kay's joined and Annie, and you see it in teachers. And the nice thing is you see it more and more now with kids having opportunities in the three buildings. This is Dowlin.
So, at NESCUS, our report, like Lori said, is there for you to click on. When we looked at our data, we were not only disappointed, but concerned about some areas. And so, we've already begun, as a staff, at a staff meeting, we began to look through the data and come up with some areas that were most concerning, most surprising, and then begin to problem-solve around how we might be able to support students better throughout the year. So, the first area of concern was really building peer-to-peer respect, that you'll look at the data and you'll see there's several questions around things like that, are you, students in this school respect other students, and so on, so forth. I have a friend in this building that I can count on and those kinds of questions. So, one of the areas that we began to work on, and with Mr. Felkowski coming in with his background in PBIS, we began this core values work. We began it early in October with a climate committee, with the teachers actually coming up with some core values, using that as a jumping-off point to teach the students about what, and then to create core values. And we had a contest around that. And the winner of the contest, actually, we had, I don't know, I think maybe three dozen entries. Some students created their own core values by themselves and other students worked in groups or in pairs. And you'll see a better presentation of this on one of the pictures that we'll show. But that core values work, I think, really sparked a lot of interest in. The other area of concern, which I think was really seen throughout all the buildings, was this idea of student voice. Students really wanna have a voice in what's going on in their building. So, this gave them that opportunity. So, the core values work that we did. We had this contest where they created, no, no, I'm out.
You're good.
I'm out.
The left at the top, right.
You'll see, the note, the guys on the left didn't win. They were just the subject of the pictures. But we did have, our winner was actually a sixth grade student who came up with the idea of using the acronym PRIDE, Perseverance, Respect, Integrity, Determination, and Equality. The other pictures that you see here are, you know, students working with teachers, students presenting in a classroom. And then the lower picture is an assembly where we have the different teams celebrating kids, not only their academic achievement, but their being awarded and rewarded for, and recognized by the staff for their character skills like integrity or hard work, being a good friend, supporting other kids in their classroom, having good character. Here's some other finalists. We had PAWS, because we're the Timberwolves. They used that acronym. And then finalist was the NESCUS Regional Middle School. We don't need to, we don't explain all of that, how we did this whole thing. But that's part of your presentation that you can see later on. So, again, back to some of the other programs that we began to implement. We had a homework help started here, really just by the teachers. And through collaboration with Mr. Robb at the high school, Mr. Felkowski arranged for high school tutors to begin to come here on Tuesdays and Thursdays to work with a teacher in the classroom, with kids coming for homework help after school. One of the things I think that's really happened this year, not only through that program, but through our sports programs that have begun to connect our middle school with the high school in cross-country skiing, cross-country running, and downhill skiing. Kids have been able to make the connection with some of the older students. So, it's, that's been a really good program for us as well. We begun to implement the restorative management. Instead of trying to be as punitive, we've tried to use some more restorative practices to enable kids to stay in classrooms. My number-one goal really, in the discipline side of my job, is to keep kids in classrooms. So, to be able to, if students, Annie mentioned, students come into the office, when that happens, we try to get them back to class as much as possible, as early as possible, because that's where they belong all day long. So, we begun to work with teachers more about prioritizing their expectations in the classroom. UDL, I think, is a really important connection to that, because if kids are engaged, I think you have fewer behavioral problems within the classroom. And we're exploring some institutional control that is or is not necessary. So, you know, that goes to, Mr. Felkowski and I are also working together to look at other areas, like visiting schools and visiting other programs to explore those ideas. Getting students a voice, of course, the core values work did that. But we also have, beginning to put kids on our climate team and to work with adults to begin to explore other ideas around that. We have two really well-working groups that were established before that we're trying to beef up to give students voice. And those two groups were the Safe Measures Groups, that are run by our nurse, Mary Jo, and our school adjustment counselor, Peter O'Brien. And we have the GSA, which is Gay Straight Alliance, which are two groups that are supporting a lot of different programs within the school. Our Safe Measures Group, over the years, has done things like student surveys and given students voice in some of the changes that we've made to the dynamics around the building. And one of the conversations we had today, the three of us, was that we now have students in this building that don't remember when we didn't have water bottles, that we didn't allow water in the classroom. And that was really an effort by our Safe Measures Group. We also have standing desks that were supported by fundraisers, by Safe Measures. Our GSA has worked with the high school GSA to bring programs and to support students throughout the building. We have a program coming up soon, presented by the Freeman Center, coming to all of our students' assemblies to promote awareness in those areas. The other thing that is continuing to look at is how our schedule can support us in trying to help kids with their social-emotional learning. Teachers have a lot to do in the classroom. When do we give them time to be able to do things like restorative circles that are a big part of the PBIS? When do we give them time to really get to know kids? Like we talked about, getting to know kids and their families and connecting that way. And so, hopefully, by creating a new schedule, it will enable us to do that. I think there was some, maybe there weren't other pictures from that.
I think they come next.
They come next?
Yeah.
There's some of our guys that actually were on Lacon's sports teams this year. This is a picture from Mr. Lennon's computer class that he does. This is a sixth grade class, and part of their program is internet safety. And this was at the end of their 10-week session with Mr. Lennon. They received this certificate, you know, showing that they have shown achievement in the area of internet safety. Here's a couple of our guys and the young lady at one of our awards assemblies where they were honored for different achievements, not only academic, but for really social-emotional behavior that we're trying to promote in the school. And we're on to Lacon.
All right. I first want to reiterate what Annie talked about. Just a few minutes ago, we have a, we hold a bi-weekly guidance administration meeting where we focus on kids who may be at risk of not passing, not graduating. We have a wonderful guidance department, Kathy Grady, Peter Harrison, and Kitty Salavantis. We have a way to discuss the kids and come up with a plan, a solid plan to make sure that everyone's gonna graduate, that everyone is promoted to the next grade. We base this off of academics, behavior, attendance. I think that that's a really big reason why our dropout rates have been reduced so much in the last few years. So, I'm really proud of that as part of an action of Lacon, to keep kids in our track. Some of the results from the social-emotional data that Lori talked about, we're pretty pleased to discuss some of these results. We did score above 90% in the top three areas. Our kids do believe that there's a feeling of mutual respect between the staff and the students. It's very important. One of the things that we do, and we've done for 21 years now, is hold what we call our Civility Assembly. It's really a gift from the staff to the students. The teachers present all kinds of different acts, songs. Kids promote some feelings there. And it's really something that the kids can leave the school with a really strong, positive feeling. And I think things like that that we do really help to show that there is certainly a level of mutual respect between the staff and the students. Students do feel safe. They reported that they do feel safe and that they feel comfortable in emergency situations. We go through a lot of procedures, like a lot of schools do. We do spend a lot of time to make sure kids understand the importance of all of the drills that we perform. Kids feel safe. They understand what they need to do. And given the times that we're in, without getting into too much about what happened yesterday, these things are really, really important. Students report having friends, someone to lean on, not only kids, but staff. That is a really, really important part of this as well. I think we could sit here and say that two key components of social-emotional learning is respect and support. And we have those two things in spades. We're doing very well with those. So, we're really proud of that, very pleased with those results. Some of the areas that we do wanna focus on, and this seems to be a district-wide initiative, is student voice. We are certainly aware of that. We've done things to help promote students and their voice. We do have students on our school building committee. We have several students who are participating in the visioning sessions, who are active contributing members of that group. We have kids who are responsible for our core values, our statement, which is RISE, Resilience, Integrity, Self-Direction, and Epathy. So, kids had a large part in developing that core values statement. We have kids who also participate in the policies portion of our handbook. We've had meetings with several groups of kids to discuss issues such as Dresko, water bottles, cell phones. So, there are kids who do have a voice in the policies that we make at the high school. The second area that you see is reduce in-school suspension. We do have a larger than maybe what we're happy with, number of in-school suspensions. There are reasons for that. One of the things that we wanna do, that I wanna do, on the discipline side of it, is to keep kids in school. At that level, we can have a choice of externally suspending or internally suspending. The idea is to keep them in school. The next step is to reduce that. And through PBIS, we feel like we can make that move possible in the real near future. There are a lot of things that we can do to reduce the number of internal suspensions while at the same time reducing external. So, we're hoping, we expect fully, that within a few years, we'll be able to get those, that number down to more of a standard that we're pleased with. I'm happy with the support that our staff provides our students. Our kids do feel welcome. They feel safe and they feel comfortable, which is really important in our process.
So, I'm gonna just show like the surveys. When you look at it, you know what you're looking at. I'll click on that. And then, just one other thing, Steve did emphasize, as you see, they don't stop. This group of three people are constantly going. Their phones ring all the time. Their phones ring all the time. Their doors are revolving doors. They are needed by someone in something. Steve's getting interrupted today because a car was parked in the wrong place. And then there's kids who need it and this and that when the group of us are meeting. But today, a long time ago, it feels like, prior to this, they were also in a meeting which they regularly attend. Many of the rest of us attend as frequently as we can, led by Trooper Andy Canata, attended by the police chiefs in each of the towns, as well as with our our fire captain from Dalton. And it just so happened it was scheduled today. That's not that they said, we've got to meet. We meet with them all the time. We get a ton of attention. And we really, you know, we can't pontificate about things we don't fully have information on at this point. But what we can say, a couple of things that were coming out of that meeting is really the the security of the buildings. But secondly, that people know what to do. And 95% of students at Wacona reported knowing what to do. That's a pretty high percentage, given we anticipate that there's kind of always someone who says says no for survey reasons. But that kind of thing, the survey data at Wacona in certain areas around safety, not just feeling safe, but knowing what to do. And that is largely attributable to the work that these three do and the outside support we get from that safety team that we're part of.
Question. Yeah. I mean, you have, it is great. I know Wacona has such a wonderful, you know, culture, you know. You know, you got 90% up there, you know, 90%. I'm assuming that's 90% of students feel those three, you know, they feel like they're safe in that place, you know. But what are you doing about the 10%?
We are, we are.
Which is awesome, those two, Aaron and Steve.
They're happy with the results, but we're not satisfied. We do things daily to try to improve. We want to get to 100%. We want every single student to feel safe. We want every single student to feel respected and respect them. So these events like civility are a step in that in that direction. We are constantly promoting that that feeling of of respect and safety. Our core value of RISE is just another way to promote that. Next year, we will advertise that with banners and T-shirts for the incoming freshmen. So we're going to do a lot of things to continue to promote those that positive culture. So yeah, we're, those numbers are great, but we want to continue on and improve as much as we can.
No 10% higher?
Um, no. I don't know with the 10%, I can probably try to guess.
Yeah.
You know, to achieve perfection is a difficult thing to do, but that doesn't mean we're not going to try.
I'd like to hear some more specific strategies in the future around those things, particularly around bullying and some of the other things that obviously we have going on in the school. I feel like a lot of, I think it's great that you're presenting this information, but I always feel like it's a it's a commercial and it's a bulletin board for how great we are. And I think that there's a lot of areas that we could certainly be working on improving, and I'd love to see the school committee supporting that, those improvement initiatives in our schools. So I, those are hard conversations to have, but I think that's a lot more of what I want to, I want to know about is how do we get? I think we all have the expectation that we know how great this school system is. And I think that's why we we all want to serve. But we're also here to work around the 10%. So I would, I would love to get into that a little bit more in the future.
One thing that's not a commercial and that we've been been talked about and is not something I've experienced to date is something Steve mentioned earlier today. And Sean's talked a lot about, and some of it's logistical, and some of it's personality, and some of it's, I guess, work ethic and empathy. But when you walk around the halls at Wacona and not only do do Steve and Aaron, but the I know your name and I know who you are and you know me, that we had, I mean, DRA, who's their architects and engineers, they didn't talk about the the structure of Wacona. The first thing they said to me is, why does your principal know everyone's name? And kids know his name and they seek him out. And Steve said something earlier today, and we have, I think the big things we've got to work on that were talked about. Our eighth grade data has some significant concerns. And Joanne started to talk about ways that they've already started addressing them. Our fifth grade, we're worried about kids being out of the classrooms too much with revolving doors due to social conflict and then not feeling comfortable going back into the classrooms. And how do we support that? Our 10th grade data, which Wacona staff is the first one said, they're going, it's going to be a shift for Wacona staff. Steve's ready, but Wacona staff is saying, but we have a really well-run, respectful building, is really saying, yeah, but you can't deal with things by always using in-school or no-contact orders. You've got to get to the root of the problem and help kids fix it because not talking to each other forever isn't reality. But one thing Steve said earlier today that Sean Aronkast isn't here, but keeps talking about, is he attributed to, we're a really small school community and we feel really small. And we're able to know our kids, know our families, know our staff. And if something's going on with the kids, someone is likely to be talking to me or I know them and something seems off. And that's just not the reality. I've heard these 800 students schools are ideal. Yeah, but 800 students, I don't care if you don't sleep, you're not going to know every kid and their personality and if something's off with them. No way. And at Wacona, I do think that there is a high percentage of, I know you and you know me and I know what's going on with you. You know, you have staff who, there was a quote at Civility Day yesterday, and it was from Laura Miller, and she said, I felt welcomed and supported here since I was 14-years-old. I'm not going to guess her age, but she's a grown woman who's been teaching there now for 15, 20 years. And the staff make themselves vulnerable. When I have a difficult day, people in my department make me feel welcome and supported. So we definitely have work to do, but I think our strengths are what we have to use to get there. So by sharing those and then sharing them with each other, I think are the big pieces of it. The best part of the piece was when Wacona had their staff meeting, as Aaron will say, I think it was atmosphere of mutual respect and students have rapport of friends, was like 95%. He wants to know who's that five? What are we doing? Who's connecting to them? And those are kind of, that's where Wacona has to go. Who's the five? Who's the 7%? How are we connecting to them? Different issues, obviously, at NESCUS. And then even more different issues at the elementary, but our data is not always our best source for fifth grade. I mean, 10th grade.
I'd like to add too that, you know, what are we doing? But one of the things that the whole district's been doing is, well, I'll give an example. Before, before we came here tonight, we all sat in a restorative practices workshop with Mr. Felkowski, second of two hours, of a total of six hours, but the second session today. And there was like, I don't know, 35 staff members from the district signed up for this workshop, teachers, vice principals, paraprofessionals, specialists. Last time, we actually had some folks from Camp Beckett. That's another program that I guess I forgot to mention. At NESCUS, we're, we have a leadership program here on Wednesday afternoons for students, and it's with partnership with Camp Beckett Chimney Corners. So those folks came to, you know, the first session of that. So even though we do have, you know, it is kind of a commercial, but the staff is still feeling like we can do better. And they're showing up for these workshops. And we have over 50 teachers and other staff members enrolled in the course for UDL. So I think people are feeling like, yes, we got to, we got to, we got to make it better. And people are invested in that.
And yeah, and just something that Kathy said to me before the meeting, that she's working to get all of her fifth grades involved in different, in different projects within the school. So I think when we look at percentages of kids, really like narrowing it in on what are we offering our kids to have a vested interest in in the school or have that trust in adults. So it gives your son, it gives me something to think about because we're a little bit bigger. How do we know that we are reaching all of the kids, which is tricky, but I think that's an important question.
Right. Kids being nice to kids was definitely more of a theme at fifth and eighth. At 10th, it's more the theme, are you missing anyone? Because if you're, that's that minority, are you missing anyone? 90% of the time, though, when you do know who some of those kids are, but you and Aaron know them, and maybe Donna Verin knows them really well, and they have a connection, it's getting them the support to feel a connection to another kid that seems to be the bigger challenge around some of those kids. But the elementary, I think Kathy had looked at some of her data, and that's part of why we have the Justice League. Why are kids not feeling they're treating each other well? And how can kids solve it? At some point, Kathy, I think I already spoke to you about it, but for the first time ever this year, to your question, Pete, what are we doing? We not only had professional development for teachers, which is what Mr. Felkowski's offering, we actually had professional development for kids from a kid and for teachers from a kid. Kathy's now friend.
She's my Twitter friend.
The live bits, her Twitter friend, her professional friend, her professional colleague, who's a young lady, a very, how old is she, Kathy? 11?
10.
10. Who really was concerned with how kids treat kids and how kids are impacted by things that go on. And she now travels around working with kids, around how they treat each other and around things of that nature. And so it's kind of an interesting shift because our kids got professional development from another kid on how kind of built some infrastructures around treating each other better. We got to keep working on it, just some things like, we know we have problems, how are we addressing them? Like, those are kind of some of them. And that was really spearheaded by Kathy.
I think it's great that a lot of these programs are starting now in the elementary school because, you know, when I was growing up, there was never any of these supports, really, kids with kids, trying to teach kindness. It was sort of just expected that you knew how to treat everybody. But in light of events that happened yesterday, especially teaching your kids early, getting them to understand respect for each other and themselves, and understanding that when they have issues, they can come speak, it'll carry with them through to the middle school and to high school. So hopefully by the time that the kids that are in elementary school now get to Wacona, maybe we'll see the 90% drop to 90, or increase to 97%. And they'll really get the idea of what this community is and how to interact and connect with each other.
Another thing that's gone on too is that, I know at middle school specifically, but I actually am a teacher, a different teacher, that making sure we treat each other well and that we interact with parents positively and parents interact with each other positively because kids feel our climate. Kids know, I mean, kids know the dynamic between staff members. They know if they can split with staff members. They know if staff members don't treat each other well. They pick up on all of that. And I think there's a piece of that as well that I think we also focus on our staff relationships, our adult modeling. This week, most of our principals, if not, I think everybody, asked for feedback around teachers because we love Teaching Week to make teachers feel good about themselves. We really, we value what you do. You work hard. We want you to feel positive when you come here. And we got feedback, I mean, some of, I read some of the feedback earlier from Kathy Buckley about, you know, Amy Grell, it comes to mind, there was feedback around teachers district-wide, but you're reading it going, I hope my, my child is treated that way by a teacher one day. I hope I'm, I hope I feel that way. And then at NESCUS, Joanne and Pete took it to the level of having kids submit things and really stop and think for a minute, my teacher's a person, they work hard, what could I say about them? And got some incredible things.
One of my favorites was that this teacher was so nice, and she also has really nice smelling motion. What a kid connects with, was, you know, the fact that she recognized that this was a nice person and she, she's a human.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. It was a good topic to hear.
If you do click those, just so you see it, the top is the overall categories. Again, Joanne made a point earlier, like, do we really care about the state or do we care about 90-plus percent? We care about 90-plus, 100%. So we started just talking about our percentages. And then when you go down into it, just be careful that you're looking, here's, here's Wacona, here's Wacona, we only have one high school. If we were in Pittsfield, it would be Pittsfield High, the district. We only have one. District is Wacona High School. And then the state's the last column, and it goes all the way down, in case you do play around with it, it doesn't look like.
But really, the only, we have good stuff on NESCUS and Wacona, but nothing, nothing on the elementary school.
We have good stuff, meaning we have quality data. There's concerns in the NESCUS data, so we'll take on the, you know, Petri and Beckett, the sample sizes are just so small.
How come we didn't get cranked?
It was the first year of the sample, several schools didn't get their data back. So hopefully, we really want to see a full fifth grade sample. And you've got 16 kids who spend most of their day with one teacher, they're focusing on that. And and some of it, like Mary Kay said, you know, well, it was whatever percent, but that was, that was one who didn't agree. It's, it's hard and it's probably about one teacher. So we certainly looked at it and took some, but it's not, I guess you'd call it, it's not overly reliable data.
We're getting, they're going to perform the same next year or annually, as far as we know.
Yes. The other thing we hope is more districts take advantage of participating, so the sample size is even larger, but some opted out.
Okay. Is that the end of?
Yes. Sorry. Oh, the cheerleaders. I was like, no, there are executives. I told you the districts are, the cheerleaders, they're not cheerleaders, they're just happy people. They're good educators. They're just, they really love their jobs and they're good at what they do. The cheerleaders are also good what they do. They, I believe they came in 11 out of 17, but they had a wonderful trip. And Mr. Less might have more because he was down there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
All right. We're moving on to personnel, and there is no change. Is that correct?
Yes.
All business, anything unfinished from today or earlier meetings? And in new business, anything that we should consider going forward, anything that the committee feels should be a topic that should be put on in the future agenda? If nothing, remarks for the good of the committee. Are there any remarks? Mr. Farley.
Yeah, in light of what happened yesterday, well, down in Parkland, people were getting murdered. At Wacona, they were having a civility program, which they run, I think it's the 19th year. And they had a couple of high schools visiting, watching the proceeding. And I've been to the civility program, and it's really a wonderful program. So I just want to commend the Wacona staff and the teachers there and the kids for having this really wonderful program and in light of what happened at Parkland High. And I know what Peter's saying to it. Here, here's a kid who was expelled, not suspended, expelled and banned from the campus, and comes in with a semi-automatic rifle and starts shooting up the school. There's, there's just, it's an unfortunate thing that we have certain people that can't be, for some reason, can't be reached. That's why I think it's wonderful what the assistant principal was talking about, is keep trying to, you know, keep trying to reach, reach out to all of the kids. And yeah, it's, it's a hard thing to get. I mean, here's a kid that's banned from the school, and he has a history of violence, a history of, of an obsession with weapons, and, you know, obviously, a kid that is very angry and violent and not going to, I don't think is going to be affected by some of these nice social programs that they're, they're trying to do. So some kids are just not going to be reached, unfortunately, I guess. I think it's commendable that they're, they're working so hard to try to do that. And I guess that's all I have to say. At least, at least Wacona's really trying and doing a really nice program.
Just one thing, Mr. Gazal is a really good point and Mr. Farley as well, but this morning when I was talking to Mr. Messina, while we felt, I mean, Civility Day was one of the best I've been at with how welcome and supported you feel, but if you weren't there, why? And Steve Messina was looking at who got dismissed, who wasn't in school, and wanted to know why. Because that's somewhat, like, so sometimes while the programs are important and stuff, sometimes monitoring's just as important in saying, what's going on with this kid? Why isn't he here? Do I need to keep a closer eye? Like, because that's a sign. When you don't choose to show up to Civility Day, you're kind of saying something with your feet. I mean, of course, there's exceptions where someone's truly ill, especially right now. But sometimes it is monitoring as much as it's solving, unfortunately, and trying to make sure you, you're watching what's going on, you're reaching out. So I was impressed Steve was doing that today, checking that list.
Mrs. Steve to myself.
I just wanted to comment that less than at my house, when we were listening to the horrible news of what happened at Parkland High, one of the things that was noted was that that student mixed in with other students and was able to exit the building because he blended in with other students. And the thing that I commented on at our house was that I don't think that could have And the thing that I commented on at our house was that I don't think that could have happened at Wacona because Lori knows everybody.
Aaron knows everybody. I know a lot of people. Aaron Robb knows everybody.
And the administration knows everybody. So there wouldn't have been that opportunity for that person to exit the building unnoticed. Also, from personal experience, having come to the building, to Wacona on one occasion, I was really impressed by the security. I couldn't open the door. I had to buzz a buzzer and be let in. And they actually asked me why I was there.
You'd open the door, we would have.
And that was before all these events happened, but that's something that I took away. And lastly, to Lori's point about, you know, this trend of, you know, discussing a bigger high school, you know, that the high school, you know, in question has 3,000 students. How do you even manage that in terms of keeping an eye on the safety of the children? And to your point of having a school that's, you know, four to 500 students, really speaks to the safety of the students because you know everybody. You know what's happening and it's invaluable to have that resource.
Ms. Tapper.
I guess, you know, after hearing all this, I guess my point would be is how did this kid get guns? 17-years-old, he's got an AK-47. You know, I think that's where discussion's got to go. There should be a certain amount of outrage, not just from everybody, but schools and everybody say, "Hey, let's, you know, how did this kid get this stuff? And, you know, let's, let's stop that." And then maybe we can talk about the rest.
A lot of the schools do have metal detectors, you know, like Parkland had it, 3,000 students. And at the beginning of the day, I mean, you know, some of the doors were open for kids to come in. So I, I mean, if you had a metal detector, you know, that would have maybe found that gun, but you can't, even at Wacona, there's so many doors there. You'd need a metal detector, maybe, maybe 15 of them and other schools saying. But, you know, it's almost, it's an almost impossible task to keep the schools safe, totally safe.
Mr. Gazillo.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that civility day certainly had an impact. I had a group of students at my house today and they were still talking about civility day and what impact it had on them and how they felt about it. So I think it is a wonderful thing that we brought to Wacona and I know it has impact. I've seen it firsthand through multiple years of students in my house. So I think it's wonderful that we do that. The other thing I would say is I also think it's wonderful how much, you know, the school community reached out to one of their own who's struggling right now with cancer. And, you know, I hope that they don't, they don't forget about that child and that family on all the other days that they struggle on. I think it's fantastic what they did in his honor and I just hope they continue to show him support throughout the year. I think our whole community needs it.
I would just announce that I think our next school committee meeting is March 11th and it's the final adoption of the budget. So we really need everybody here because it calls for 101 to 2/3 of 15. So put it on your calendars. We need good attendance for that meeting especially. There's nothing else?
Motion to adjourn.
All those, did anyone say aye?
Aye.
Need to close. Adjourn. Thank you.